Good morning, everyone. Let me just first start by thanking the League of Women Voters. This is a terrific event. Unfortunately, it was postponed last year because of COVID, but I'm so glad to see how they're running this year. I'd like to thank the Amherst Senior Center too for putting this together. It's not easy to socially distance in our current climate, but nonetheless, it's important for all of us to be here for this election year. I mean, it says coffee with the candidates with no coffee, so I guess it's morning with the candidates, but nonetheless. So, I'm Shawn Leavitt and I'm running for Amherst Town Board reelection. To give you, I've been on the board for four years. Currently, I am Commissioner of Veterans Affairs for Erie County. I'm a captain in the Air Force, United States Air Force. I'm a father of two and a husband. So why am I here? What's our purpose? I'm a public servant. It's why I joined the military at 23. It's why I serve in county government. But more importantly, I'm here because I have a two-year-old and a four-year-old, and I want them to love Amherst as much as I do. I want them to stay here. I want their kids to stay here. I love this town and I want them to also be a part of my life and a part of this community for decades to come. And we do that by making smart decisions at our level. We do that by being progressive and playing offense in the town of Amherst. Thank you very much.
Dan Ryder.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for coming and thank you for the League for hosting this event today. I'm Dan Ryder, a native of West Seneca and an Amherst resident for 25 years. I used to have four kids. Now I have four adults, okay? I was a sonar man in the Navy for four years, traveled around all over the world, okay? When I got out of the Navy, I attended UB under the GI Bill of Fame and bachelor's degree in civil engineering. And I hold a professional engineer's license in New York, Michigan, and Pennsylvania, and I've practiced in several other states. My career has been all in hard bit, heavy, dirty construction. Deep sewers, tunnels, rapid trains and chimneys, silos, and marine construction. And by the way, I checked out this building this morning on my way here and also the library across the parking lot. And because many years ago, I was out here and I could tell you, if you take an excavator and you dig down 10 feet, you're going to hit soils that have the consistency of toothpaste. I was out here with crew, team, and we drilled down 40 or 50 feet to rock, filled those holes with concrete, and that's what supported your floor today. That's your city, man. Thought I throw it in. That's my background, and I'm running for town board because I want to return Amherst to two-party rule and encourage discourse and a teamwork approach. I also want to ensure that employees have the best possible technology, tools, and equipment to work efficiently. And I want to make sure that Amherst maintains a competitive situation and purchases and bids. And that means if you want a Chevy, you may end up with a Ford because I don't want to split hairs five-millimeter.
Thank you, Dan. And next we have Jackie Berger.
Good morning. I'm Jackie Berger. I want to begin by also thanking the League. And we've been thanking the Senior Center, but I think we should be thanking the staff of the Senior Center. So I want to applaud the staff for always working on our behalf. I'm running for reelection so that I can continue to serve as a council member, and I currently am the deputy supervisor for our town. I love my role. I take my responsibilities seriously, and I want to continue to champion Amherst as a safe, inclusive, dynamic community where we can raise our families, prosper, and live life to the fullest. We faced many challenges due to COVID-19. Throughout the pandemic, we have kept town services running and developed approaches to connect to you. Those of you who are regular participants at the Senior Center know they managed to flip a switch rather quickly and start programs virtually. I've worked to support our community. I facilitated working groups. I've worked with all sorts of groups, and we've worked to support our community. I volunteered in drives. We've held all sorts of events so we can support our community. It was important to take care of the people. I've brought energy, dedication, and a tireless work ethic to the Amherst Town Board. I vow to continue to bring the same energy and devotion to represent you. I would be honored to receive your vote. Thank you.
And Raymond Herman.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ray Herman. I'm running for a council member position. Just a little background, I've lived in Amherst my whole life, went to Williamsville schools. I'm actually the fourth generation in my family to live in Williamsville. My great-grandfather came here from Canada, opened up a barber shop around, you know, before World War I. And he actually became mayor of Williamsville. So this has been a town that's given my family a lot of opportunity, and that's one of the reasons that I want to run for town board. I think I have something to offer. I'm a career prosecutor. Worked at the district attorney's office for over 33 years. I now have a private law practice. So I think that having a law background is something that's very useful on a town board. But the reason, the main reason I decided to run was because I think we need diversity on the town board. Growing up, I always recall we had a Democratic supervisor and then it would go to Republican, it would just flip back and forth. And the council members were always a mix of Democrat and Republican. I think that makes for a good responsive government because you have a variety of views. You have people asking questions. It's healthy. Unfortunately, four years ago, that all changed. It became all one party, and we've seen some results from that. I just want to mention, and I think it's an issue that a lot of people have talked to you about, the taxes. Under the last four years of Supervisor Barry Weinstein, the tax levy went up 4%. So that's about a 1% per year. Then what happened is, under the first budget of the new administration, the tax levy went up 7.3%. So then it's gone up a total of 18.5%. So I would like fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
And before I forget, you will be voting for two members of the town council. So these four candidates will, are all hoping you get one of your two votes. So our first question will go to Shawn. And it is, "How would you pay for the libraries, roads, stop signs, and public services without raising taxes? And since the cost of everything is increasing, why not raise taxes?"
So you do that stuff, you do those functions, roads, signs.
Please speak directly into the mic, Shawn.
Yes, no problem. You do those roads and signs and some of the other things you mentioned by having a plan, right? That's what it comes down to. It's like anything else. It's like eating an elephant. You don't eat it all at once. You take your time. You plan. What roads are in disrepair? Which ones need to be fixed first? Which are the highly traveled roads? Which ones need to be fixed first? Which ones aren't even Amherst roads, but are county roads and state roads? Well, if they're not Amherst roads, maybe our state assembly members need to hear about the roads that are in disrepair or our county legislators. So you focus on what needs to be fixed first, and if you systematically prioritize, you can get it done incrementally. Thank you.
Repeat the question, please.
"How would you pay for the libraries, roads, stop signs, and public services without raising taxes? And since the cost of everything is increasing, why not raise taxes?"
Well, I'm not in favor of raising taxes. I know a little bit about roadwork, and roadwork and paving is directly related to the amount of money you want to invest in. And it's also related to the price of oil because that's 6% of the asphalt you see going down the road is oil. That's a lot of money. We have to, of course, like Shawn said, we have to pave and maintain the worst situations in the town first and keep an eye on inflation in things like oil because that's going to tell us how many miles we can get done in a year. And it's a moving target today with inflation. We need to probably look at adopting practices where we recycle the existing asphalt that we take off the road because that's a very valuable commodity. About 80% of the oil that went in that is recoverable if we recycle, okay? Now, New York State funding, that some people call chips, I call it crumbs, okay? We need to lobby to increase the funding on the local level. Every time you go buy a gallon of gas, you pay 70 cents a gallon, combined state and federal tax, okay? You put 20 gallons of gas in your car, you pay $14 in tax. Thank you.
One of the things we inherited when we were elected were lots of roads and streets and infrastructure that had not been invested in. So we've been investing in that, and that's important. But there are also things that we're doing and getting ready to do that save money. One of the largest investments that we hope to make in the next few weeks is we're buying our streetlights from National Grid and converting them to LED lights. It's been a long process. It will take a bit longer. That will save us a tremendous amount of money. We've been doing things like that. I work with a lot of the environmental activities that we're doing. We're buying more electric and hybrid vehicles. We're doing things to save money so we can invest in roads and upgrades. It's really important that we think about that. We need to invest in order to meet the service needs you're all talking about. We want good roads. That doesn't just happen. We need money. We need state money. We need federal money. We need to pull it all together to make it work. And sometimes it means a tax increase. We try not to, but like I said, we inherited a situation where many things have been neglected for a long time.
In answer to that question, I would take a very detailed review of the budget and ask, "Where is the money going?" There are plenty of places that there's an opportunity for savings that will not in any way affect the high quality of services that our town, that our residents expect from our town. I'm going to give you an example here. There's been a hiring spree, a creation of appointed positions, high-paying, that never existed before under Barry Weinstein. We now have four deputy town clerks. We always used to have two. There was a super, age of the supervisor who was getting over $90,000. That position never existed. There's been a lot of positions that have been created that I don't believe are necessary for the functioning of town government. So I would just take a complete and thorough review of all of the town expenses. Certainly, grants are part of the whole story. We want to keep our roads repaired, but you've got to be physically responsible. And if you just keep hiring people, another example I'll say is, like, excuse me, we had the COVID crisis, and all these appointed people got erased. If I were part of that, I would say, "This is a crisis. People are out of jobs. They can't deal with the tax increase." We're just going to have to say to these appointed people, "Your pay is frozen." I used to be an appointed person at the district attorney's office, an appointee, and I was during the red green budget. My salary was frozen for several years because the county was in a fiscal quandary. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the next question goes first to Dan Ryder. And remember, you don't have to take your full two minutes. We're already going to go overtime, but that's fine. If a resident comes to you with an issue you need to research, will you get back to them and in a timely manner with an answer?
Well, does a research take five minutes? Five hours? Five days? You know, five months? Five years? I don't know. That's a hypothetical question. Certainly, we need to improve communications in the town. I think the town's website and email system is archaic, okay? Yes, if a constituent comes with a question to be, and I'm qualified to answer that question or research it, I certainly will. And if I am ignorant of the issue or the solution or answer, I will go to town resources and find out the answer and get back to them. I think this is very important, and I think improving communications in the town is a very high priority. I mentioned giving the town employees tools and equipment. That includes giving the town board the tools and equipment we need. Thank you very much.
Well, that's a simple question. I do that every single day. Residents reach out. I call. I talk to them. I go to their homes so they can show me things. I meet them in coffee shops. Sometimes it requires research to get them answers, and I get back to them. I follow up all the time. I think it's one of the most important things we do. Besides doing it individually, one of the things we did when we first started, and we're doing again, is we hold regular community meetings so that people can talk about their concerns and issues. Thank you. I didn't use my two minutes. You've been waiting for that.
Of course, all answers should be answered promptly. I will, I think I have the ability to do that. People have the right to expect that their elected officials will answer that. I think we can do better. I've heard reports of people calling the town and no one answers. They give a message, no one gets back to them. I don't think that's acceptable. From my personal experience, I will always answer a question from anyone at any time. Thank you.
Yes, yes, the people of this community, they are my boss. There's $130,000. I'm responsible to answer to them. That's my position. That's the role. I accept it. So, yes.
Okay, so, question, question number three, not that we're counting. And this may also be a short-answer one, which would give us time for another question. "If elected, would you run for another office and not serve a full term?" And the...
I plan to serve my four full years if re-elected.
I would echo that. I'll keep it simple. Yes, I will serve a four-year term.
Yes, I'm in this race to win a four-year seat, and I intend to serve that.
Yes, a four years. Thank you.
Okay, and the last, this will be the last question, and it will go to Ray first, okay? "What can you do to make the Maple Road property produce taxes? For example, the old Buffalo Shooting Club."
Well, I believe the Shooting Club is still owned, is privately owned, so I would assume that they are paying some kind of taxes. It's not, it's sort of vacant land. But that's the question. What would I do to make them pay taxes? I suppose the other question will be, well, what are you going to do with the land? And I would say we have to have a public process to decide what should be there. Should it be a commercial development? Should it be open space? There's a lot of questions to ask about that, and so that's my response.
It's a very unique question because there's a lot of stakeholders in place when it comes to a question like that. Right, so you've got to ask yourself, "Is the ownership and is the property being taken care of?" And it was a shooting club, so do we still have contaminants in that ground that need to be removed before it's a public space? So, in our current capitalist society, if it's privately owned and people are paying taxes and it's being, the land's being used properly, there's really no reason to pursue any other direction. That's their opportunity. That's their right to do. So I would say it's a challenging question, but if the opportunity came to develop that, especially with this proximity to UB, I think it's someone we should have our eyes over to and be prepared for.
Well, as far as I know, the Shooting Club is privately owned, and they should be paying taxes on it. I don't know the exact answer to that. It's a surprise to me that there's an issue about maybe no taxes. I understand that the lead shot was cleaned up from that site. It was a very lucrative cleanup many years ago. And at one time, the place was going to become a mixed-use development. That got trashed. And now I understand it's owned by a student housing company, a private enterprise. And as far as I'm concerned, it should be fully taxed at the current town rates.
It's simple. It's owned by American Campus Communities, and they pay their taxes. We've had a little bit of conversation about them doing something there, but it's up to them. It's private property. People need to remember that we don't get to make decisions when land is owned by someone else if they're doing it within the zoning. So right now, I don't think they have any plans to do anything.
Thank you. It is time for closing statements, and we will begin with Ray Herman and move to the left.
You have a choice this November. I certainly encourage everyone to vote. And the choice is, do we want to go on the same path that we've been on in the past four years, which has been very significant tax increases totaling 18.5% tax levy? It's stable this year, but I have no question that it will continue to rise. And the question is, are we going to continue with, I have hiring people that know someone? Are we going to have huge budgets that really aren't responsible? Or are we going to be more transparent? There's many examples I can give about the lack of transparency. All of our candidates are completely committed to transparency in our town board. I've talked to people regarding the Westwood project, and there's a lot of frustration. They feel that they're not being heard. The task force is dominated by town employees. It should be the exact opposite. It should be mostly residents. And there should be a visioning process to determine what should be on that place. I am for Westwood being green, but I think that we need to totally scrap the Westwood task force and reconfigure it. That's what I would do. And so, if you want a new direction, if you want to stabilize your taxes, if you want to have a government that is efficient and not wasteful, I would encourage you to consider voting for me and my other fellow candidates. Thank you.
I guess it seems to be hard to go to the right person. Anyway, I just want to wrap up by saying I love what I do. I put in hours every day. I spend time on the weekends. I think the work we're doing to move Amherst forward is important. We work as a team. I know it upsets people that we don't argue. I think it's good when a board can work together. We work together. We do our homework. We talk to people. We ask for input. There keep being comments about transparency and backroom deals. We're not doing that. We hold meetings. We invite people in to participate. We want to hear what you're saying. Reach out and talk to any of us. I love what I'm doing. I want to keep doing it for you. I've been a public servant my whole life. I'm an educator, a retired educator at the moment. And it's important to serve my community. I've been a volunteer. And again, I just ask for your vote. Thank you.
In conclusion, I'd like to be a town board member and to push for fostering transparency in all matters, such as an improved website that will display important agenda items in public hearings in an easy-to-read format, hold special, single-issue, in-person, and Zoom town board meetings for major undertakings and projects. This will engage all interest stakeholders. Events will be well-advised to encourage participation. Publish an executive summary of all major undertakings in addition to the luminous reports presently prepared. Insist on cost-benefit analysis on all projects, including numbers in an easy-to-read format. And I'm for projects that are necessities, not necessarily niceties. I want Amherst to have safe streets and neighborhoods, and this includes ample police patrols, streetlights, and sidewalks. I live along the Lehigh Trail in the village, and I observe that is used 12 months a year. I support bike paths, trails, sidewalks, et cetera, that separate pedestrians and bicyclists of traffic. And number one, I don't like wasting money. And I urge you all to get out and vote. Thank you very much.
So thank you, everybody, for staying to the very end. I know the town board's candidate form is not the marquee event this morning, so I appreciate everybody being here. I'll thank you again for the League of Women Voters. Thank you again for the town Amherst Senior Center. So, early voting starts tomorrow. I encourage you to vote. If you're not your favorite candidate, hopefully that can be your second favorite because there's two spots to be voted on. So the town, I sat here four years ago and asked for your vote, and you gave it to me. We've accomplished some amazing things in those four years. We have lights on Niagara Falls Boulevard. We have the Saddle Boulevard Mall. We have consensus with our residents in... We have consensus with our residents in New Road. We've obtained green space near woods. We've obtained green space working on in Westwood. We have a public safety office, police training center on Bayland. All these things happen over time. We don't do this as a hail mary. It's incremental, and it takes methodical planning, and that's what's being done to represent you here at the town of Amherst. So in closing, I would just like to say thank you again, and make sure, please, go out to vote starting tomorrow or November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to give a special thank you to all of the candidates.